This is how in person can be viewed on Local People Channel 1303 or via the Internet by going to Town Hall Streams dot com and selecting Bucksport. You can email questions and comments prior to or during the meeting to slasire@bucksportmaine.gov or also call 469-7368. Roll call, Jane.
Hello, you're on and when it's your turn we'll let you speak, okay?
Here.
Yeah, and you're from...
Here.
Here.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we'll get into budget discussions. The first item is social agencies. We have quite a few folks, so we are going to limit the time to three minutes. We will not make any decisions on A.D.'s tonight, as we've done in the past. We will listen to the requests and then when we come back for our final budget discussions, we will make decisions on where we have the monies to spend. As a reminder, we passed a ordinance or a budget resolution, I guess is the best way to put it. Oh, we have some money to give out for social agencies and this year it's right around $73,000 and I'll let you know that we've got somewhere north of $150,000 of requests. So, we're gonna have some tough decisions to make and I appreciate everybody that's gonna be here and speak on behalf of your agencies. And hopefully, everybody understands and appreciates that we do take them all seriously and we'll try to do the best we can to answer folks' needs, so, thank you. With that, we'll start and I'll go down the order I have here on my agenda. The first is the American Red Cross.
Hello.
And if you'd just come up and state your name, please.
Sure, Caroline King. I'm the Executive Director of the American Red Cross here in Northern and Eastern Maine. Our request is for $2,500 to support disaster relief and that is our response to home fires as well as disaster education for community members, helping them plan and prepare for and potentially prevent home fires. The Red Cross also installs free smoke alarms for any family in the area that needs a smoke alarm. We will come to their house and install that for free. So those are just some of the programs that the Red Cross provides. We do ask municipalities to support our work. It ends up being a very small way. We do not, however, if you for whatever reason are unable to support us, we will still support the families in Bucksport. And so we do ask you to consider that. The Red Cross provides immediate support to a family. We provide them with financial aid in terms of a prepaid debit card that they can use following a fire to buy essentials, temporary housing, usually in a motel, food, clothing, replacement prescription medications, shoes. Often, we see families who've left absolutely everything behind and so this is financial support that they need immediately to provide for their first couple of days out of their homes.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? And I will let folks know after you've given your presentation, you do not have to stick around for the entire meeting if you don't want to, so...
I love alphabetical order. And we're under American Red Cross. Sometimes we get bumped into Red Cross and then, you know, but thank you.
Thank you. Next is Buck Memorial Library.
Good evening. I am before the council this evening to request a sizable increase in your contributions to the daily operations of the Buck Memorial Library. We fully recognize this is quite an increase because as you can see with the statistics I provided earlier, the library has become a central part of our community in less than a year. With the challenging economy, families, seniors on fixed incomes, the under unemployed are increasingly using our library every day. To date, we have issued 463 library cards to citizens of Bucksport. We host twice-weekly story hours that forge new friendships for children and their families. These past few weeks, we have assisted citizens with obtaining tax forms, job applications, housing applications, and medical forms. Our recent downtown business Easter stroll yielded 96 patrons and four adults. Our citizens are readers. We are averaging over 800 books out each week. Even with the considerable discounts that we receive from vendors, our book budget exceeded $18,000 last year in eight months. We are using interlibrary loan each week. In addition to that, we have the free e-library, cloud library. We are also basically kind of becoming the Chamber of Commerce because we've got a lot of tourists coming in every day and asking us, you know, where to eat, where to go. Last year, park passes to Acadia, when the Canadian border opened up, I suddenly had to know where people could get rapid tests. So, I recognize that you have a limited budget, but I hope that you can increase ours because we have been receiving the same funding for, I believe, 18 years. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you. Next is the Bucksport Area Childcare Center.
Hi, I'm Jill. I'm on the board at the Bucksport Area Childcare Center. We serve 85 local kids in the community. We are, based on increased costs, we are looking to expand our services and the $2,500 that we've requested for is a long way to helping us do that.
Great. Questions? Thanks, Jill. Bucksport Bay Healthy Communities Coalition.
Hello, I'm Sarah Hayman and I am the President of the Board of the Bucksport Bay Healthy Communities Coalition. And it's kind of crazy to see you in person. I've seen people on Zoom so much more than in person during this pandemic. We are grateful to be able to ask the town for your support in the amount of $20,000 to help us fund a community health outreach coordinator position. We have a coordinator in that position right now, Denise Keane, since October, and she is making great gains in being able to reintroduce to our community the TIP program, Thriving in Place, which is a program that aims to help people with needs remain well in their homes. As an organization, we're also contributing money to fund that position, but we're deeply grateful for your support this last year and remain confident that this will have a very positive impact on the citizens of the town where we live. In this position, she's also helping us to support the work of bringing people to the table and understanding the public health needs. A couple other programs that we have and partnerships with the Good Morning Program and the Department of the Public Safety Office. I'm, yeah, I wonder what else I should say. We've enjoyed a longstanding supportive relationship with the town and we're deeply grateful for your willingness to help us meet the needs, especially at this time when there are so many. Thank you for considering the request.
Thank you. Any questions? Bucksport Community Concerns.
Hi, I'm Lori Hunt. I'm the Secretary for Bucksport Community Concerns and just found out that I was gonna be here yesterday because the co-presidents both got called away unexpectedly. Marcia said that you have all the information and we're not asking for an increase, just the same amount as usual. I don't know if you all know or not, but we have moved locations. For those of you who are familiar with town, we're in the old Credit Union building now at 181 Franklin Street and we have more space for storage. We were running out of space for all the things that we do.
Did you have to make many renovations in there or...
No.
No?
No. The Methodist Church had done some work on it.
Taken care of some of that stuff, okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks. Any questions? Thank you. Bucksport Area Senior Center.
I don't think I can leave this on.
You won't be that long.
I won't be that long. I'll keep it there. Thank you first, all of you, for your continued support of the senior center. I think you all know how important it is to have the senior center here in this community. There's a lot of communities that don't have the fortunate senior centers like we do. But Jim knows, he helps deliver meals. We deliver meals and activities and things for seniors in the area. And you guys are our major funding, so we appreciate it. Thanks.
And just so I make sure, I'm not reading this, you're not asking for an increase.
Nope.
Okay. All right. Any questions? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Told you you could leave your jacket on.
Yes. Thanks.
Down East Community Partners.
Thank you for having me tonight. I'm Rose Honders, the Director of the At Home Program for Elders, and I'm here representing all of the programs that Down East Community Partners represents. I don't know if you have our letter in front of you right now, but our ask is for $16,124 and we provide, the number that you have is 300,000, over 300,000. And that number is actually over 400,000 because I received the numbers today and we have given over, well, the dollars that have come through DCP from the federal government, $100,000 in rent relief to this community, to landlords and tenants alike. One of the largest contributors would be, of course, your Head Start program, which is alive and well and has been thriving in this community, serving not only the children but the families for many years. And it seems like 100 years ago, I taught Head Start, so that was a whole lifetime ago before I even had my, now 16-year-old. Transportation, as you all know, is another huge benefit to all of our communities and Down East Community Partners has provided over $100,000 in expenditures. And I know it's also important to look at the households and number of individuals served. And if you look at that number, that's almost 3,000. And I'll revisit our rent relief again, I just got that number today. That $100,000 went to over 101 families. I'm happy to elaborate on any of this, the thaw, fuel assistance, crisis intervention, tax prep, any of this that you have in front of you, I'm happy to elaborate on.
Just looking at your application, do you ask the county for any money and they just don't give you any? Is that what happens or...
The county?
Yeah.
So Hancock County? Oh, we receive funds from Hancock.
Okay, I just...
We receive both Hancock and Washington.
But from the county government themselves?
Yes.
Okay. I just noticed you had a zero in there for funding.
All right. I can follow up with that here and if you'd like me to email that to you?
Please, yeah, thanks. Any other questions?
You can't make it that easy. They had me sweating. Thank you.
Down East Transportation.
My name is Paul Murphy. I'm the Executive Director at Down East Transportation. First, I'd like to thank the town for its longstanding support. We operate transit in and around Hancock County. We're a nonprofit organization and we operate under agreement with Maine Department of Transportation. We are not asking for an increase, have not asked for an increase from the town for many years. We think we provide a valuable service and that the town gets good value for its investment. We are, or our planner, I believe, will be engaging with the town to reevaluate the service and make sure we're doing, we're meeting the market in the best way that we possibly can over the coming year.
When do you expect that to happen?
Susan could probably tell you better than I can, but over the coming year, I would say.
When I spoke to Mr. Crickler, initially, it was getting out of the winter season and a bit into spring. He had some other things that he was working on. I reached out to him today. As a matter of fact, I sent him a message asking when it would be possible to schedule the trip to ride the bus and have the meeting at the senior center after that, so we should know soon. I would imagine this spring sometime.
He's really busy and as are we all right now, trying to get our big project, which is Island Explorer in Acadia, off the ground. It gets off on June 23rd, but the planning end of it is pretty much complete, so I would say he'll probably free up some time before very long.
Great. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I would note that the combination of the bus and the taxi is what got us invited to Charlotte to speak about it at the National AARP Convention because it's one of the unique ways in which communities have looked to try and add service for those not within the public bus service.
The compact area.
The compact area. Otherwise, I just wanted to note that that's why I went to Charlotte two years ago, because AARP invited me to come and talk about how we...
It's true, particularly the taxi portion of it is innovative and not many communities have been able to bring FTA funding into that application of service. And we were very fortunate that we had a creative administrator at MDOT because we tried to design a bus route that would serve outside the compact area and we couldn't put one together that worked. And so this idea of a taxi came up and we floated it with MDOT and someone, had the right person who said yes. And I think, "But, let's do it and ask for forgiveness if it's a problem." And so it's lasted now quite a number of years and it's been successful.
Yeah, absolutely. Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Eastern Area Agency on Aging.
Hello, my name is Dan. I'm the Development Manager for Eastern Area Agency on Aging. Like everyone else, I want to thank you for your continuous support to our agency. We're requesting the same $1,500 as last year. In the past year, we served 154 individuals from Bucksport through some of our key programs like Meals on Wheels, Commodity Supplemental Food Box, our furry friends, Food Bank, which provides supplemental pet food for low-income seniors, call, you know, information and assistance with Medicare, Medicare 101 classes, and our Care Care Program. We have a variety of different programs as offered and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Questions?
Yes. You know, Meals on Wheels, how is that distributed and how often is it distributed?
So, the meals themselves or how is it funded?
How do you get them to the people?
How do we get to the people? Through all of our volunteers. We have over 100, just for the Meals on Wheels program, we have 150 volunteers through four counties. They come to our shop, basically pack the meals. They are frozen meals and they go out, five meals a week to people. It's not supposed to be their only source of food, but it's helped supplement it and they are microwaveable meals. Unless you live way out in the boonies, which some parts of Maine are, you get 10 meals until they go out every other week. Yeah, I mean, we have, through the agency, we have over 300 volunteers volunteering more than 40, 4500 hours, 45,000 hours in a year.
Do you happen to have a number of volunteers you have from Bucksport?
I do not have that exact number, but I could find that out and email you.
That'd be great to know, just because we're looking at trying to get folks to get involved more and...
Yep, I will get that to you tomorrow.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Anything else, guys?
Have a good day. Thanks.
Thanks.
Families First Community Center. Maureen Bartley.
She doesn't.
She was the one that asked for some stuff. Okay. Health Equity Alliance.
The Health Equity Alliance and Bucksport Pride is under the Economic Development Budget. That's, I believe, economic development met with them, but I think that it reflects under the Economic Development Budget, where it's located.
Okay.
Which is why they're not here this year.
Home.
Hi, everyone. I have our annual reports, which wasn't ready at the time of applications. So, thanks for listening to us today. It's hard for me to keep things under three minutes, so I'll do my very best. So last year, we provided emergency shelter to 171 people across four locations and we opened the only warming center in Hancock County. What I mostly want to talk about today is I've been doing this work for 17 years and last year, there was a noticeable uptick in people sleeping outside. And so in Bucksport, we encountered a lady tenting down by the river and we worked with public safety to try and bring her inside and we weren't successful. We also worked with the library and public safety in the town. We discovered a man sleeping in the stoop of the library. So, the harsh reality of our times is that many folks experiencing homelessness now are experiencing substance use disorder, severe and persistent mental illness. And so, we're attempting to bring folks in inside. The advantage Bucksport has for a town our size, to have a homeless shelter within five miles of your town is something that most small towns do not have. We're the only homeless shelter provider in Hancock County except for the DV shelters. Moving forward, we're working with state partners to create easier access to shelter for people and part of that is the diversion program, which I've asked for funding for. Beyond emergency shelter, you'll see in our annual report that Home's footprint is as diverse as its work. We distributed an astounding 118,000 pounds of food last year. That's just the rescue from local Hannahford here in Bucksport. So that's not including the food pantry, which distributes up to 160 a month between Ellsworth and Orland. The Shelter Quilt Project, we have produced 80 quilts last year. Today, we're at 100, so shelter guests get a homemade quilt so they can participate in that project. The Bargain Barn and Childcare Programs had stops and starts last year. However, in the end, our little thrift store and childcare center remained valuable resources. Our daycare director, Christina, she's a resident of Bucksport and she's part of a special focus team of providers across the state advising Senator Collins and King on challenges related to providing childcare in Maine. This last year and several months of the previous year have been some of the toughest months we've experienced because of the pandemic. We've not been immune to outbreaks or the pain and loss due to COVID. We've stepped up to meet those challenges in effective ways. We've trained our staff to do COVID testing on site, so when we had an outbreak, it stopped at three people. We found places for folks to go. We provided 28 hotel rooms, so when, if we had an illness in shelter, we still were able to put people into shelter who were coming in, so we never closed the services. We had some folks in Bucksport, some folks in Ellsworth, most in Ellsworth. So our team of 47 employees, 16 are from Bucksport and they do whatever they can to help residents of this community. And while we have been working and fighting harder than ever before, our donors have empowered us financially in ways that we could never imagine. You've recognized how important this work is and you've helped make this possible, so we thank you. I can't not acknowledge that Home and the town of Bucksport have grown closer over the last five years and we really appreciate the collaboration and I just look forward to our future together. We're not asking for an increase. We have received money from Hancock County Commissioners. They gave us $30,000, which we're putting towards the diversion program. And so I think the diversion program will also help with Bucksport's housing challenge. It will prevent people from becoming homeless first and foremost. It can also help so if somebody falls out of general assistance, so if they don't qualify, we can help fix that pipe or if they've burned bridges, we can help keep them in their home if they're outside of the other boxes that exist. Any questions?
Great.
Sorry.
You weren't that long.
I just wanted to mention one other thing, program that they started this year, which is they have, they now have a recovery coach at home to try and deal with shelter guests with opioid or addiction problems and that was funded through Healthy Acadia is where they are getting it. But it's an important resource to have locally for people who are at the shelter. And as you all know, I serve on the board of Home now and have become much more familiar with the idea that dozens of people are transitioned from homelessness to permanent shelter as a result of their work is pretty significant.
Great. Thank you. Hospice of Hancock.
Everybody knows me.
Yes, Ms. Sorey.
How many years have I been coming here asking for money for different things? Well, now it's down to this hospice. Oh, I wanted to give you this and you can pass them around. It explains the difference between hospice and hospice of home care and it's not on the paper that she gave you, so you can share it. I don't know if there's enough copies, but a lot of people say, "Well, what's the difference between home care and hospice and volunteers?" So, okay, so the program is, it says, I think you all got copies, did you all get copies of the one that the director sent? Okay, so I don't have to repeat it, but I did want to stress that they have been going for 50 years and I've been a member for 50 years, since it started. And so I guess I should know enough now what's going on. But this year is different because of the COVID virus, so we've had to close down the home visits and we did, we terminated that program, but only for four months and then they started again and they changed the way people could make visits. You know, when you go in the home, when somebody is dying, you have to use precautions, but with the virus, it's double the precautions that you needed. And so they gave them the personal protective equipment, things like that, and told them how to get around. And then they added the program, as I said in the letter, they added educational programs for the volunteers and it was really a good program. I even was involved, was one of them, in one enrichment program and guess what it was about? How to write your own obituary, you know? And I listened to that and watched it and it really was very educational and intelligent program and now we can support the volunteers. So primarily, the patient care support to this area had 75 patients, three were in Bucksport. My volunteers, I used to have six volunteers, I was the coordinator, but now we're down to three because people are getting older and there's no new volunteers. The bereavement program, and you probably all know what that means, taking care of people who've had somebody die in the family, that had one Bucksport resident and then they had the medical equipment to think, just store and loan out and they had five residents of Bucksport. And then they had, and because of the virus, we had a lot more educational programs than we had 33 and 25 were participants from here, so as I said, I participated. So, hospice, as you know, is a partner in the community. It's really a piece of caring for people in the home. And... really a piece of caring for people in the home. And we really appreciate the support the town of Bucksport has given to us in the past, and we are asking for $1,000. And that's, if we have any other questions.
Great. Any questions? Thank you for your time and service.
Oh, thank you. Yes, I was on the board of the health center that long, too, but they decided I was old enough. So, next month, you'll see me in the paper being retired from the health.
Congratulations.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Lifelight Foundation?
You're from, excuse me.
Hi.
There you go.
Hi.
Uh, thank you. Hi, thank you for having me. My name is Ashley McMillan. I'm the Director of Annual Giving with Lifelight Foundation. Thank you so much for accommodating. I am actually in Wyndham a couple hours away. We are requesting $1,231, which is the same request as the past couple of years, which equates to about 25 cents per capita. Really brief, quick overview of Lifelight. We are a statewide organization. We have paying air bases across the state. We have one in Sanford. We have one in Millington. We have one in Bangor. Each one of those bases has a helicopter. And then, in addition, the Bangor location also has a six-wing airplane. And then, we also have ground ambulance. And to put it simply, we bring ICU-level care to wherever the patients be. So, whether that is transporting a patient from a local hospital to a more advanced facility or making scene calls. We service about, we transport about 2,300 or so patients a year. We have transported 86 Bucksport residents since 1998, and 10 of those were in the last year. And we have also landed for 13 scene calls since 1998 in Bucksport. So, that's either on roads or people walking on trails or what have you. So, that's kind of the high overview, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Great, thank you. Any questions? Thank you, Ashley, for hanging on the phone for us.
Yeah, thanks for accommodating. Greatly appreciate it.
Have a good night.
You too. Bye-bye.
Loaves and Fishes Food Pantry?
I'm Rhonda Parker. I'm the newly elected treasurer of Loaves and Fishes, as well as a volunteer for them. Thank you very much for supporting us with $300 in the past. We are asking for 400 this year to help us defray the ever-increasing cost of food. And to put this in perspective, the residents of Bucksport are our fourth-largest users of the pantry. And COVID made it so that people could not go in and do their own shopping. But now, we have opened up again, and people go in, self-serve, pick out what they want, and usually leave with about $400 worth of groceries. In 2021, we had 22 unique households comprised of 64 individuals from Bucksport. Now, those 22 unique households made multiple trips to the pantry for a total of 129 times. We served 353 people. For the first quarter of 2022, which is January through March, we have served 18 unique families from Bucksport, which is only four shy of the total for last year. Serving 54 individuals, which again is 10 shy of the whole year of last year. 49 family visits and 168 individuals. To put this whole thing right into perspective, the pantry is open on Wednesdays for five and a half hours, and I volunteer there on Wednesdays. Yesterday, we served 50 people from the entire Hancock County in five and a half hours. Five of those people were brand-new people who had never been to the pantry before. And in two and a half hours from 4:00 to 6:30, that's when 23 of those people came. So, we serve a very valuable service to the folks of Hancock County, as well as to the people of Bucksport. So, I will answer any questions?
Any questions?
I do, though, want to interject something. You asked about Meals on Wheels. I am also a volunteer driver for Meals on Wheels, and I've been through all of Hancock County. So, I do multiple things.
Even the boonies, right?
Even the boonies, yes. I, one of my people lives on the road beside Ron's Hardware. I'm almost to the end of that road. So, yes, I've been to the boonies.
Thank you. Northern Light Hospice?
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for allowing me to speak with you this evening. My name's Troy Bailey. I work for Northern Light Home Care and Hospice. I'm here tonight where we've applied for a non-municipal organizational funding for $250. Northern Light Home Care and Hospice provides home care, hospice, palliative care, telehealth services to residents of Hancock County, including Bucksport. A lot of the services aren't reimbursed at cost. So, in addition to our home care and hospice programs, we also provide health services in the community, such as COVID-19 pop-up clinics, especially in rural communities, school-based COVID-19 vaccination clinics. And we've also provided testing, COVID-19 testing at various businesses and facilities across the state of Maine, including here in Hancock County and Bucksport. In the 12 months ending September 30, 2021, we've administered more than 40,000 COVID-19 vaccinations, more than 10,000 influenza vaccines, and administered hundreds of homebound vaccinations across our state, including here in Hancock County. Locally, here in Bucksport, calendar year 2021, we've served 84 home care, home health patients with a total of 1,264 visits. We've served six hospice patients here in Bucksport with a total of 362 visits, and our estimated value of services is $429,735. So, Northern Light Home Care and Hospice takes patients regardless of their ability to pay, including those in homeless shelters. We are a nonprofit organization. Although we are reimbursed by Medicare and Main Care, this does not cover the full cost of home care services. Main Care reimburses currently 60% of cost of care. We will not use your funding for any salaries or any benefits. Funds provided by the town of Bucksport will be used directly to offset the cost of care for the residents of Bucksport. Northern Light Home Care and Hospice sincerely thanks you for your consideration.
Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you very much.
Maine Family Planning, WIC? That's the problem with having a WIC on the front.
And you know what? I was really pleased that it was Maine Family Planning. I was like, oh, I'm gonna get up there. No, it's still there.
Hi, my name is Jackie Ewing, and I'm the new director for the Women, Infant, Women, Infants, and Children Program in Washington and Hancock County. Thank you so much for allowing me to present all but briefly with you, and we also thank you for your continued support. You all have been wonderful to our program. So, I'm not going to read the letter that you all have in front of you. I will say, though, that last year, approximately 68 families were assisted from the Women, Infant, and Children Program, and they received almost 65,000 in food vouchers. This year, we're asking for continued support of $4,450, which represents $50 per participant served just from the town of Bucksport. Federal funding will match up to 2,000 of all municipal contributions, which amplifies your support to our program, in which we're very grateful. Just keep in mind, for every dollar invested in the WIC program, $2.40 is saved in healthcare, education, and productivity costs. So, it's definitely benefiting everybody. Anyone has any questions? I'm happy to answer.
Any questions?
I know I didn't take up any. I'm waiting for the dinger, but I still have time.
No dinger.
Is there anything else you would like to know? I know that we've been, you're very familiar with our program, I will say that, so.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. What I would ask the members of the council is, please take time to go through all the applications that we've heard tonight, all kinds of great causes and things that we know we would like to support and can support. So, be ready for some tough decisions on the limited amount of funds that we do have able, that we are able to pass out and help these folks. And again, I want to thank everybody for presenting and coming forward with your requests. We'll do all we can to help the folks of everybody that we can. So, thank you. What's that number again? The number that we have? 73.
There's some change.
There's some change.
73. No. Well, last year, you took, economic development ended up coming out of the table.
All right. Next, Susan, we'll let Sue get ready with her. Thank you, Mrs. Sua.
Thank you. Nice to see you.
Good to see you, Belle.
Yeah, I've seen you a long time.
I know. I've been hiding. In a gust truck. Take care, Belle.
That's it?
It's gonna be. Last time, I couldn't even get it plugged in. Yeah.
That's it. Sorry.
Okay, we have a course director here.
All right. So, I think we are, we'll do Highway Department.
Highways, yeah. We have highways, then tombs, then cemeteries, transportation, health offices, and general systems.
That's it.
For the rest of them, for this evening. So, the large increases in, the most significant increases in this budget relate to wages and fuel. Highway, the highway contract is up this year. The percentage increase request is 5% the first year, 3%, 3% in the second and third years. But it also includes a conversion to the same step program that the other departments, I've got to use my words, that the other departments have, which adds two additional step periods in that between years four and year 10. It adds a six- and eight-year step, which is similar to what the other departments already do. And then, fuel, which is estimated at 350 a gallon, which may or may not be, we have until October to lock in. And at the present time, our diesel fuel price is in the 250 range, and we obligated to a certain number of gallons of fuel to purchase from them at that rate. And based on our current usage, we will have gallons left at the end of June that we will still be able to buy at that lower rate, which should buy us a little additional time. I'm in hopes that we get down to where that 350 will be an accurate number. But that is the, the other thing that is challenged, our budget for paving roads remains the same as it did the prior year, but our cost per ton that came in for pavement is $20 higher a ton than it was a year ago. So, that, it will do one of two things. We'll pave less roads, or that number will have to go up to meet what we obligated to do on an annual basis so that we didn't get in the position again of having to do a $3 million road project to catch up for the years that we didn't. That doesn't show that. We received the bid for the paving after we had received that. And there's an, we don't have a salt price yet. We did do a slight increase to that. As you remember, we had Morton last year. We had great price, and then, we had no salt. And we had to purchase from another vendor. So, it's almost 1,000% certain that I won't be recommending Morton to you, no matter what their price is this year. It was, it was very stressful last year, and we had weather and no ability to deal with it. Happy to go through every, are there any other items, Jay, that you?
Quick question I have, Sue. Where on here is the, like, the Route 46 contract? Where is that captured in there?
The Route 46 contract is under equipment rental. And the estimated increase in this year's contract price is 5%. That's, it was, that's what we put in as an increase in the cost of that contract for this year. That's, yeah, it's under equipment rental.
Yep. Any questions?
So, in the last two years, it looks like the salt prices have gone down on here per extended.
Last year's salt, we used, we ended up with, last year was a very mild, went to this, what's there for through March 28 doesn't reflect the last bills that were received for salt for this year. But last year was the year where we ended up with, I mean, it goes back to fund balance, but we had a very slim year for salt usage. Did you want to tell them what we're, the machine that we're trying, or just in case they see something we don't own?
This, this year, we're trying a new piece of equipment. We're renting it from a company in Bangor. It's a small, very small, actually, excavator that's on rubber tires. And it has a head instead of a bucket that will mulch bushes and trees, and well, small to medium-ish trees in a ditch line. And we're trying this to try to ease the pressure on the crew, to ease up on chance of injuries, and the ticks are. And the tics are just unbelievable about doing the handwork and the ditches and plowing through all that stuff. So seeing how this is going out, we had a chance, and we had enough money in there to try a rental for a month. And we're going to see how much ground we can cover. If it works out as good as I hope it's going to, I'd like to try to just figure that once a year into my budget move forward.
How much is it?
It costs $4,000 for a month. And the cost to buy a machine like that is around $140,000.
Yeah, we don't need to buy one.
That's what I was thinking. So for $4,000 that I can absorb into this, this year's budget, I would, I'd like to have it come out working as well as like when we tried to show the machine, and that thing's been super.
Okay.
Is that what you've been working with out at the lake?
Up near your house.
It really looks nice.
Yeah.
Really looks nice.
And we've only had a little more than a whole day using that, and it's, we've gotten quite a considerable distance out of it, so.
And what's that blade in the front? It almost looks like a plow.
It has the, has a little, like a pusher blade that you can use to push material if it happens to come out in the road or something.
What's the name of it?
The machine is a, is a Volvo machine that we rented from Chabuk Bayros out of Bangor. I don't remember the name of the head itself on the thing, but it's made to mulch, not to cut like a, it's not like a bush hog type thing. It has like rotary teeth that will, you can put it up high on a tree and just chew it right.
So where are you now on the Silver Lake Road?
We just started near, where Kathy was, Elfi on the power line. And we're trying to work that whole section of Silver Lake Road that we're going to do the repaint work on it this year, three miles or so, and get all of that section cleared before that work starts. That's the, that's the goal.
Jay, will this reduce the size of the crew that goes out and does the bush clearing on the road?
Using this machine, we have an operator and an attendant that basically moves signs and is there to have flashing lights to warn people. So, yeah, instead of using the entire crew to do that task, two people are doing it.
Any other questions on highway?
The other great thing about it is it provides a better finished product because it turns it into a...
It chooses to chips.
It turns it into chips instead of just being cut down.
How much, how much, what are you planning, I mean, Silver Lake Road, is there, are you going to have time to do anything else?
We are, we're hoping that we'll be able to do that whole section.
The whole area over there?
In a week or so. And we have a lot of smaller sections that are, have tons of alders and other things that are really going. We're hoping to get a lot of sections.
Okay.
By the canoe launch right in there, oh my gosh, that looks so good.
Well, I guess the spot's on Route 46 and everything. Thank you. Next is town garage. And again, the biggest cost increase there, folks, is fuel. Kind of getting us back towards 1920 budget.
Slowly.
That's all right. Any question? I mean, everybody's got that in front of them. I know you want to put it up for folks to see, but it's a $3,700 increase, and pretty much all of it is fuel. So we'll play that number, I guess, when we get it. And I'll let you show that, show and tell, Sue.
Yeah, but we just is heating fuel and in terms of the impact to that, to that budget.
And under streets away is the final one, is cemeteries.
And cemeteries is different this year than what you've seen it before. And the reason for that is we have, the cemetery committee has been meeting every other month and sometimes, I don't think it'll be doing that, but at least every other month. And you voted to do stone repair in Moulton and Oak Hill. One is a result of vandalism, one is a result of a tree fella. But there's a significant amount that needs to be done. And when we did got this contract, we got pricing for doing stone restoration of 80 to 100 stones, which was approximately $5,000. And so in an effort to get our cemeteries in the shape to which they really should be, and in particular to make sure that the veterans' graves in those cemeteries are appropriately addressed, there, the contract amount in there is, one is for mowing Oak Hill, which we already do, and the second is $5,000 for stone repair on an annual basis. The Memorial Day flags are put under this because the American Legion is the one who does those. We provide the flags, they put those in. And then we've got our regular donations to the non-municipal cemeteries, and then an additional $10,000 to finish the River Road Cemetery project.
Just as an aside, Sue, on, not on that form, but the next one you sent us, I think it double added the contract piece, because it shows $32,000 for total, not on, not on this one, on the, on the worksheet. But this is the correct number up there?
This is the correct number. Councilor Downs is on our cemetery committee, Councilor Eastman, Mr. Johnson is also from it. But the goal is to more accurately reflect work that is done to bring our cemeteries up to, I don't want to say cold, but up to sort of where they should. Many have, you know, certainly there's not people that care for those stones anymore. There are those that have been damaged over time, and doing 80 to 100 of them a year will help us to catch up on that process.
Questions?
Just a quick one on the, on the River Road Cemetery, where last year there was $10,000 budgeted for that, and we've only expended 1,800 thus far. I'm just curious as to, is that part of the long-term strategy there, or?
The 1,800 that we've spent doesn't include the money that we obligated under the contract that you signed, that just hasn't, they haven't gotten here yet. But we've obligated the money for moving the stones from one and installing those as well.
Thank you.
In the past, and I can't remember, have we had, didn't we used to have cemeteries send us requests for donations, or has it always been that we've just set a number and that's what we've done?
Last year, we had Hillside asked for more than we normally give them because their investments weren't doing well. And when you, you upped the amount and gave them five years, probably a couple hundred...
Normally, that's how it's, I apologize, but...
Since I've been here, I have not had any one...
But we have had requests come in to ask for an upgrade or an upcharge, right?
That one is the one we have, yes.
Okay. All right.
Evergreen came in once for additional funds.
I thought there was somebody else too, yeah, okay.
That was, you were still clerk then, right?
Yeah, I was gonna say, a couple years ago, wasn't it?
Yeah, a few years ago.
All right. Any questions on cemeteries? Yes.
A couple, a couple questions. First of all, thank you to Sue and the council, and East, and his council, and Downs for all the efforts. We're working hard as a committee to bring the cemeteries up by support to be, I hope, excellent soon. And this, this added funds will get us on that, on that path. A couple of things on here that I shouldn't have brought up to you before. The River Road Cemetery, there is a River View Cemetery, if I can picture it right, the old Methodist cemetery.
The old Methodist burying ground, yes.
Okay, all right. Just for clarity, that might be another thing to look at. There is no, there is no donation being given to the River View Cemetery at this point. That was left out for whatever reason. My only other question, comment, falls around the difference with Silver Lake giving 875, Evergreen 1,700. These are private cemeteries, so to speak, and I'm not against it. I want to be clear, I'm not against any of this, but I sort of agree with what you're suggesting, is we really should have a recording mechanism back for those cemeteries, telling the town how that money might have been spent, as well as perhaps they should be coming in and presenting their needs, much of these social agencies have. I'm all in favor of what's happened so far, but I think it would help with accountability to explain why there's such a discrepancy among some of these cemeteries.
Well, thank you, Chris, because that's what I was wondering also. I look at this, and I know, you know, I realize some cemeteries are bigger than others, but there's, there's a few large ones here that don't get the same as others. And to your point, we ask for transparency on most everything else we give money to. It doesn't have to be much more than a ledger of, you know, we had five mowings and it cost us this, and we had this much for perpetual, that we could see where it was going to.
Yeah, I think it's going to get better. I think the town's going to get better at this, and I challenge the folks at Public Works in the past, as well as Sue, to explain why, like, why do we have a contract for mowing for Oak Hill, but not for the mowing out at, what is it, Moulton Cemetery? You folks mow Moulton Cemetery, but there's been no records that I know of. And that can be, that can happen. It'll help us move forward in budgeting as well in the future. I appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to health and sanitation. Next is the transfer station.
So the tipping fee increase, if you remember, you did a DM&amp;J waste contract that increased our, our transportation and the cost of the metal containers that we keep at the dump, that we rent from them for demo and wood and those kind of things. That's the most significant. The cost of living adjustment for our MSW is the same as was contracted, that we've seen no additional fees assessed for that.
Do the folks on the payroll out there, are they also under the highway?
No, they are not unionized. And their, their raise proposal is 5%.
Okay.
Yeah, the transfer station isn't just highway, is, like, I'm not sure if they didn't want it or what happened. It was before my time, but...
It was offered for them to be underneath the...
Okay. But they also have a cost of living that...
Yes, they have the, they, 5% is what they...
And obviously then we just do theirs yearly when it pops up?
Generally, what we've done in the past is we've done cost of living, and then the subsequent two years has followed the cost of living that's in the other contracts. So those are the, the big ticket items that we, we have that drove the increase in costs was the tipping fee change, and then the 5% wages were the biggest.
Questions?
Sue, there's been a placement jump in the, in the amount that they're taking for the well monitoring. Did they just, is that something new, or they...
We're required by the DEP to monitor the wells that are all over that old landfill. And the monitoring wells, that monitoring's done by an engineering company, Haley Ward, who's, who's done it for a number of years, but the, we budgeted 7,500, and this year's the, they actually, they've hit it.
Yes, they've already hit it, what my point was. They, they only took 68 and 67 over the past couple of years, and then all of a sudden, bang, they've already used their 7,500.
Yeah, well, it's an annual monitoring, that, I mean, we get one report from them that reflects all the well checking that they do for the year.
Yeah, okay.
I guess that's a, that's a DEP requirement for, to make sure that the well monitoring doesn't show that anything's migrating somewhere else or...
Yes, but I assume we were paying for the time and the materials for them to come do those?
And the final report, which goes to the state, which we have to do.
But I guess to Jim's point, now that you look at it, you know, it's a 10% increase. Is that Haley Ward's increase, or is that, are we testing more wells?
That's Haley Ward's increase. Haley Ward used to be CES.
Right, right, yeah.
And they...
But I mean, so is, are we going to get hit with a 10%, so we're actually going to cost $8,000 on this?
I do not believe so. 7,500 is what I asked them, and that's 7,500 is what the number I got back.
Okay. All right. Next is health officer.
Health officer... Health officer is one line item. Health officer formerly was, we paid $100 a year stipend to Val Sulia as health officer. And Val retired from that, and we added health officer to code enforcement officer and his duties, and adjusted his wage by $25 a week, which I know is not $100 a year, but it's a more involved amount of work that gets done now because of, we have a designated staff members here handling those kind of complaints. And I think the last one is general assistance.
It is.
And general assistance is state program, administered locally. We reimburse 70% of what we spend as long as it doesn't exceed a certain amount. And when I say exceed a certain amount, I mean like a... And when I say exceed a certain amount, I mean, like, a lot, you know, six figures. Then we would, might have to actually do that. But we haven't in my time here ever exceeded, well, I can't do it with, ever exceeded, I think 6,000.
6,000, yeah.
Was one that we had had, but it was, the restrictions on it, income-wise, are very stringent. I mean, it's a very low bar in order to be able to get assistance. And so we budget eight, and we budget 70% of that in revenue. So if we spent the whole thing, the 8,000, we've also budgeted the revenue offset from the state to cover that 70%. You know, we, we haven't seen it. It's not. Jackie Hunt does our general assistance program. It's generally Wednesday mornings, but, and people can come in anytime, and I'm her backup when Jackie's not available or on vacation or whatever. I do general assistance applications. But one of the things it saves us so often is home. Home is, for people who apply, who are homeless, we are not looking at apartments and those kind of things. We don't find those kind of locations, but people get assistance, and they get into a program where they can get help, but it's not, it's not coming out of the town. The home has dealt with many of our applicants in terms of things. If they fall outside of our income parameters, they have been able to, as Tracy said, pick up getting something fixed, getting a car repeal, getting something done so people can still go to work and that kind of thing. So it really, the relationship we formed with them as a, as a back and forth kind of first resource has helped keep our general assistance budget down significantly.
But regardless, there's very little risk in reducing this budget line to six, from eight to six, because even if, if next year's cost were $10,000, the, on the other side, the revenue would cover that.
It'd be 70%.
Right, okay.
Any other questions? Just remind folks, if you would like, or if you can, have town managers review this into me by next, next Thursday. And adjournment?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Call those in favor. Thank you, folks.